I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, October 13th, 2020. This is a Prescott City Council Study Session. Please call and roll.
Mayor Minghurelli.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Or.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Yes.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And the record will reflect that Councilwoman Schules is excused from the meeting.
All right. Thank you for that. Welcome, everyone, in person and virtually, if you're out there watching. Let's start with item 3A, please.
Discussion and presentation from Lisa Atkins, Commissioner of the Arizona State Land Department, regarding state land in Prescott and surrounding areas.
Thank you very much. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for inviting me to your work session. I love nothing more than to spend time talking about one of the most unrecognized assets in the state of Arizona. So with your indulgence today, we're going to go through a lot of things that impact every corner of this state. And you have three maps. One is the entire state, which shows state trust land, which is important for perspective. The second one is more colorful in that it shows the perspective of trust land, federally owned lands, and private lands. The third and fourth, I took the liberty of, do you mind if I remove this while I'm speaking?
Oh, you're fine, yeah. Please.
God, please do.
Thank you. Much better. The third one is state trust land in Yavapai County, to give you a perspective as well. And the last one is state trust land from the perspective of the city of Prescott. So you have those for a point of reference. Mayor, if it's all right with you, I don't mind being interrupted during the presentation. I think that be able to answer questions or get clarification as we go might be helpful. So with that, let us begin with the first slide. I am very pleased to have been appointed by Governor Ducey as the 21st Commissioner of the Arizona State Land Department, whose sole purpose was designed to manage trust lands that were given to the state at statehood. In addition, that's where all of the other natural resources agencies actually come from, because at statehood, there was no Game and Fish Commission, there was no Department of Water Resources, there was no DEQ, there was no nothing. There was no Department of Forestry. It all started in the Land Department. And so there's quite a history of the Land Department, going all the way back to statehood. But our most important responsibility is to manage a portfolio which was given to the state at statehood by the federal government, were no different than other states. Probably would help if I did this. First failure. Hope that was me.
I think it was you.
Okay, good. Thank you. We are no different than any other state. There's an Old English practice that goes back to the 1700s, but every state in the Union was given land. Think of it this way: On the very first day of statehood, your constituency, very first day of Prescott being a city, your constituency would have an expectation of services from the state, or the county, or the city. You have to have a revenue stream to be able to generate those services. And this land was given to the state of Arizona, a little over 10 million acres at statehood, specifically to perform its due diligence as a revenue stream for a defined set of beneficiaries for the state of Arizona in perpetuity. Arizona and New Mexico being the last two continental states that came into the Union, managed to have enabling acts and constitutional requirements that far outweigh any other state. And that was born from the experience that the federal government had with those states who gave away their assets, sold them for pennies on the dollar, not that they squandered, but they didn't use them for the purpose that the federal government envisioned. So we have a very strict procedure that we have to go through to not only manage the portfolio, but also to dispose of any assets in the portfolio. And I say "assets" because we're known for having 90% of the portfolio still within the trust, 9.2 million acres, but it also includes things like subsurface minerals. So the portfolio is actually much broader than just the raw land. If I could show you this, this is an important point, and it's one that I have been stressing since taking office. And that is, this is not land for land's sake. A lot of people own land for different reasons. The reason the state has 9.2 million acres left in the portfolio is for a very specific reason. That land is, has always been envisioned to provide a revenue stream for the 13 beneficiaries, the largest of which is K-12 education. So every acre of land that's in the portfolio, every section of land, every piece of land that we have is anticipated to be managed to protect and enhance its value, so at the time that it's ready to move from the portfolio into private ownership, that the value has grown, and that the beneficiaries get the benefit of that value. And the reason this map is up here is for an important reason. If you take a look at the lands that are owned by the federal government, which would be your national parks, your Bureau of Land Management, your Forest Service, your military reservations, which would be Camp Navajo, the Goldwater Range, the tribal reservations, all of those land uses, wildlife refuges, those are all owned by the federal government. There's no revenue stream to the state of Arizona with regard to economic development, except user fees for that. The next category of land is private land. And in my view of how the economy works, it's private land that really generates, is the backbone of any successful economy in this state, albeit in this country. So if you look at the trust parcels, their sole intent was to be managed, to become private land when appropriate at some time, to increase that revenue stream. So I don't look at the trust, and neither does the governor, as a land management organization. I look at the Land Department as the trustee for an asset that is intended to generate dollars on behalf of the beneficiaries while it's still under the management of the state government, but even more so, so that it goes into private ownership. There are, if you took all the lands in the trust, the 9.2 million acres, and aggregated them into one area, it would be larger than Maricopa County, about one and a half times larger than Maricopa County. If you compare the private land ownership, the trust land ownership, and then all federal holdings in the state, everything in the state's going to be built, as far as the economy is concerned, from the private land ownership, which is slightly larger than the 9.2 million acres that we hold in the trust, and then the trust lands. That is the foundation for a good, strong economy in the state of Arizona, because federal lands are not going to produce anything. They will produce product when it is appropriate, they will produce mining when appropriate, they may produce forestry, they clearly, in a state like Arizona, produce recreational opportunities. But the trust is not public land in the sense that federal land is. Those lands are protected, their ancillary revenue streams are not what supports the economy in this state, it's private land ownership and what the trust lands will eventually become. And that's how we manage the trust. And I have an old saying, that if you don't take care of what you have today, you're not going to have it tomorrow. So the non-urban portion of the portfolio is just as important to me as the urban. Every acre, every section, every acre in the portfolio belongs to a beneficiary. You can go on the state land department's map, you can look at the ownership of, or the, who, what acres are assigned to what beneficiary. The largest clearly is K-12. While we know who those beneficiaries are, it's important for two reasons, but one reason that it is not relevant at all, and that is, we do not manage the portfolio because of what the beneficiary, who the beneficiary may be. It is important to the beneficiary, because when we sell a piece of state trust land, or there are minerals, and there's a royalty paid to the state, those funds are very important. They go to the state treasurer's office for the permanent land endowment fund. And for those of you who are on Facebook, you may have seen posting by the state treasurer yesterday, over the weekend, that talks about how much money was distributed to the beneficiaries out of the permanent fund. It was astronomical. We know what the value is, because it's been our contributions over the decades. That fund is now worth north of $6 billion. And the beneficiaries are entitled to a portion of the interest earnings every year. It is an important revenue stream for K-12, for the universities, for the school, for the deaf and blind, all 13 of the beneficiaries. We don't pay any attention to who the beneficiary is when we're managing the surface or the subsurface, because that's not how you do good business. But we did want you to know that one of the beneficiaries, in addition to your K-12, is right here in Prescott, and that's the Pioneer's Home. It's one of my favorite beneficiaries, as a matter of fact. I thought it would be helpful, just for a point of reference, in why I really appreciate the time to be able to spend with you today, to show you what the relationship is between the trust and the city of Prescott, and in addition to the map, and really call this out. If you're involved in managing a portfolio that is that large, you certainly want to be on top of where development may be occurring. We like to be as compatible as we can be with the surrounding areas, but state trust land is not de facto open space, it's not land not to be managed. We are hopeful to always be building a relationship with cities, towns, and counties, where we are on the upstream. As you grow, we'd like to be able to grow with you. Again, this is not public land, from the standpoint that we set it aside. This is land that is particularly scattered around the state, to be able to catch the growth pattern whenever it happens. In the first 100 years of the state, in the next 100 years, it's a portfolio to be managed in perpetuity. So you can see where we are in the path of development, and when we are, where we are neighbors, and hence our interest in annexation. Which brings us to our next topic. So we have a couple of areas that the city has, we've been in touch with the city, to look at the potential of gaining annexation to be within the city. Just from a process standpoint, when the Land Department identifies land that is appropriate for inclusion in an annexation proposal, we have to go, we don't make those decisions on our own, we go to something called the selection board, which is a board that is comprised of the governor, the secretary of state, and the treasurer. We are required to present our plans to them, so we have already spoken to the community where we want to annex, have some idea of how we're going to move forward. We go to the selection board, they are our balance, to make sure that we are doing things in the best interest of the trust, and it's their final decision about whether or not I have the authority to proceed with working with the local government for annexation.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Being here for a long time, back in the late 90s, middle 90s, there was more of a communication level with the state land department and our own planners here. And I think it was probably before 2007, when the economy turned down, and there was more state planners. Catherine Balzano was one of them, and I know that they worked very specifically with the planning department here, to look at properties in the future that might be of interest to the state, as well as the city. Are you doing as much of that reach out now, or is it, the city has to reach out to the State Department, or does it go both ways?
It's going both ways, under my watch.
Thank you very much.
It doesn't do us any good to sit in a vacuum and plan what we want to do with state trust land, because the potential for development, for economic development, the potential for your future and the trust's future, really is a two-way street. I noticed that that hadn't been done before I got there, and you're absolutely right, Councilman Blair, it was not picked up after the downturn. The department was no different than any other state department during the recession. We manage, as I indicated, a fairly large amount of resources in the state of Arizona. We have less than 100 people on the staff today, and it was even lower than that when I got to the department. So we are very lean and very mean, and to be perfectly honest with you, it's my background in having worked in and around this area for a great deal of time, since the mid-'70s, that I said, we're not just talking to Phoenix and Scottsdale. The state is much bigger than those two cities. And wherever there is growth, wherever there is the potential for economic development, is where the department will be having conversations.
Well, thank you.
So we're starting conversations with you. We have, we're in deep conversations with, like Havasu, one of the test cases between my leadership and the staff, who are fabulous people, who know our portfolio, who understand what our mission is, but we've got, for instance, 10 auctions coming up between this month and the middle, before Thanksgiving, which is a lot of work, to take land to, to take land to auction. But when I got a phone call from the vice mayor of Eager one day, and he said, "Lisa, we've been trying to annex a section of land." And I said, "Oh, for how long?", thinking he was going to tell me a year or two. He said, "For 12 years." Is there any chance you'll tell me why? And he said, "Yes, because every time we checked the box, we came back to the Land Department staff, and they gave us another box to check." We went to the selection board, Eager's in the process of annexing that land, because economic development for Scottsdale is not the same economic development for Prescott, or Prescott Valley, or Chino Valley, anybody in, anybody outside that urban core. And my background is, every corner of the state is important. And having spent a great deal of time outside that urban core, when it was much smaller than it is today, that's as important to the state's economy, and for every one of those communities to be able to blossom and grow, as anything that might happen in Phoenix or Scottsdale.
Thanks for recognizing that.
We're not ignoring Phoenix and Scottsdale, but we are, we have much closer relationships now with cities. And in fact, I just had a conversation, we were working on an annexation proposal with the city of Yuma, got a message from the mayor yesterday about it, and Tom Belshi called last week and said, "We've got to get you scheduled for time with the league." So it's a relationship that, not only do I want to build, but I want to make sure that it's sustainable. And so much of what happened in the Land Department during the recession, just really cut the bottom out of everything. And rebuilding it has entailed going from an organization that had 100 years' worth of paper, and you were lucky if you knew things were filed. We've spent a considerable amount of money putting things online, including all of our applications. We're building our relationship with our customers, but the most important thing that I hope to contribute to this department on the long term, is that economic development happens outside the urban core in Maricopa County. It happens everywhere in the state of Arizona.
Thank you.
May we ask a question? By the way, you can attribute that to a cotton farmer who very proudly represented this area for 26 years, in the United States Congress.
Commissioner, you said the selection board is the governor, secretary of state, and the treasurer, those three?
The treasurer, the governor, and the attorney general.
Attorney general.
I gave somebody a job that they probably don't want.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, go ahead.
So.
Ms. Atkins.
Yes, sir.
Was there a particular event or meeting which was the nexus for your interest in Prescott?
No.
Okay.
Actually, well, yes, I take that back. It was a staff meeting, where I was watching conversations go on that were isolated and not comprehensive. And I don't think you can take any type of land pattern and isolate it to one thing, and not be aware of your surroundings. And knowing how much land we have throughout the state of Arizona, and I'll be perfectly honest with you, it had to do with trails, which, to me, are the newest thing. Everybody wants a trail. And if it's not.
Or two or three.
Or more. And I won't call anybody out on that. To me, making those decisions in isolation completely fly in the face of what we're supposed to be doing, and that is managing a portfolio in perpetuity. What I'm trying to do is convey our interest in being a partner with any and every community and every county in the state of Arizona, for development purposes, so that your goodwill and your growth is also the beneficiary's growth. Because it does make a difference to how we manage their portfolio.
Sure. Of course, you do understand that the word "development" is not well thought of in the open space circles. Do you?
But trails are.
Pardon me?
But trails are. And I do know for a fact that you, that the city has several agreements with us on trails. Trails are, for the most part, in areas, your areas of trails, I understand, are in areas that probably would not develop from this, when you think of development for houses or commercial. So there's no reason why we shouldn't be able to work together and find and answer for both of you. But I do want to make sure that it is very clearly understood that we are not an open space department. So where there is potential for developing the asset, because it goes to the beneficiaries in two ways. When we sell land, it goes to the permanent fund. But for every acre of land that we lease, whether it's for grazing, or agriculture, whether it's for some mining exploration or something else, those lease payments go directly to the beneficiaries every time we get them. That is a revenue stream, and I apologize, I have not met with the Pioneer's director since, for quite a while. But my very first conversation with him was most of the, was one of the most enlightening conversations I've had with any beneficiary. When you talk about K-12, you're talking about a very large system. When you talk about the universities, you're talking about a very sophisticated system. When you're talking about the smaller beneficiaries, I wondered whether or not they knew how their portfolio was being managed. And the director said very specifically to me, "We have an aging population that we take care of in this facility. We are very interested in your leasing land, for which we may be the beneficiary, whenever you have the opportunity, because those lease payments are important, now that we're off the general fund, to making sure that we can take care of the residents in the way that they expect. Having an informed group of beneficiaries is very important to us." Now, do I invite them in to make decisions? No. That would be like me sitting next to my financial advisor, telling him what stocks to buy and which to sell. And thank heavens, I don't, because it looks better under his responsibility than it ever would under mine. I have the same philosophy. We want the beneficiaries to be aware of what we're doing, because our practices are eventually going to impact their ability to realize a revenue stream, but their place is not at the table, making the decisions. That means that we need to be working with the people where we have a footprint, and that's why I was so grateful for the time today, that we have an opportunity for you to get to know us a little bit better, and for me to get to understand your aspirations a little bit better.
Well, thank you for coming up.
Yeah, because when, when, I thought it was pretty much a no-brainer to do some annexations in Prescott. I'm concerned about areas that we've requested to be annexed, to be perfectly honest with you, that maybe not make it to your cut, and they end up becoming de facto open space, for which we have absolutely no tools to manage. It's not open space, which have a tendency to be dumping grounds, for which we have no resources to be able to clean up, that become fire hazards, for which we have to rely on the Department of Forestry and Fire Management. So it doesn't make any sense to me, if we're not actively managing the portfolio in partnership, where there is a footprint that we should be working with. So quite honestly, that's why I'm here today, and I'll answer any of your questions.
Thank you.
Sure.
You know, on that note, Lisa, you know, you've got some properties that you said we've kind of gone around you, if you will, and now they're islands, so to speak. What is your strategy in that regard, especially moving forward? Councilman Sishka wasn't as straightforward about how some here aren't willing to look at managed growth, and what makes sense in terms of annexations. And we also have something called Prop 400, that requires a supermajority. What are your strategies to annex these lands into the city of Prescott?
I want to work with you to find what is in the best interest of the city and of the trust, recognizing that it's not public land. But it will become a headache for the city if it's used as a dumping ground, and an off-road vehicle site, and a dump, because we don't have the resources to take care of it. And I can't imagine that all the time and effort you put into managing the city's portfolio, that you would want that type of activity right next door.
Thank you.
And speaking of that.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The mayor brought up Proposition 400, and I guess the question would be the city attorney, I don't want to put anybody on the spot. When you start talking about the city annexing a piece of property, opposed to the state's desire to annex a piece of state property into the city, would the state fall underneath Proposition 400 regulations?
Unfortunately, Councilman, I'm not aware of what 400 is. Is that a city ordinance?
Commissioner, I'm not sure how long ago it was, but there was a citizen initiative that revised the city charter to effectively require a supermajority, six out of seven votes, to approve an annexation of 250 acres or more.
So I can answer that in two ways. That's a local matter. I would hope that the department could earn your respect, and your trust, and your partnership, if we come to you for annexation, because it would make sense to us not to leave parcels stranded out there, that will become de facto open space. And ask the mayor of Havasu how often he and I talk about fires that occur on Body Beach, and that we're talking right now about the potential of selling that to the city, so that someone has the ability to control an area that you, is not fenced out. So my concern, when I watch the annexation proposals, and the reason that we came in looking for that, is I see a pattern of using state trust land to fulfill other requirements that you have, without any consideration to the fact that this is not public land, this is a trust asset. And at some point, we're going to be in a position where we're not going to be able to say, "Yes, please clip that corner of a section and use it for a right-of-way," because it begins to erode the value. And our job is to protect and enhance that value, in order for it to be viably managed on behalf of the beneficiaries. I can't annex, like I said earlier, without going to the selection board. I can't go to the selection, I won't go to the selection board without having a very specific plan. So at any time that we would go to the selection board for annexation, we would have already worked with you and your staff to agree to what the zoning is going to be, whether or not we would do something that we refer to as zoning banks. But this is not a pot of public land that can be used for people to get from point A to point B, and they just have to go by us. It's beginning to erode the value of trust land, and that I can't, that my responsibility is not to let that happen. So that's why we've been interested in annexing land, where we know that you're already talking about annexation, and to be part of the city, or, you know, we'll watch it develop in the county. But it's a management tool for us.
I get it. Thank you very much.
So this is, this is why I'm here today, as a matter of fact, because we have, in fact, made, we have, in fact, taken a look at this, and Section 32, which is circled on there, is the section that the city proposed to annex as part of your negotiations with AED. AED is planning to develop Section 33, from our understanding, and the city plans to provide Section 33 with water service. So here, we would have an isolated section of state trust land that has development potential, and we're being leapfrogged. And I can show you lots of places in Maricopa County that have been leapfrogged in the Phoenix and Scottsdale area, and when that happens, it is very difficult to find somebody who's willing to pay market price, when there are absolutely no improvements. No water service, no sewer service, no development, no anything else. So we watch, and that's going back to the conversation between the department staff and city staff. We've been in close consultation, we're working everywhere in Yavapai County, to watch the growth patterns, to make sure that when there is an opportunity for things to move forward, that we don't miss that opportunity, because we're not paying attention. In fact, La Paz County is getting ready to do something that we weren't paying close enough to their planning and zoning, and we're instituting a new practice in the department, as far as keeping in touch with 15 counties and 99 cities. Am I off? How many members of the league these days?
91.
91, okay. I just added eight to Belshi's to-do list.
There are probably those out there.
Yeah. Because it doesn't make any sense. And if you go back to the foundation of why we have trust land in the first place, it makes an infinite amount of sense. We're not coming to you to say, "It has to be done this way." We're coming to you to build a partnership. We're not coming to you to say, "It has to be done this way." We're coming to you to build a partnership. Otherwise, what I'm very afraid of is that that land is going to end up isolated and used as open space, and the value will continue to erode, as it has in some other areas where we have state trust land, where you're developing. And state trust land has been used for a water line or a power line or some other transverse to get across state trust land to, to get two points together. And what that does is begin to strip the value of the, of the trust parcels. And at some point, we're going to be in a position where we may have to say no. It just doesn't make any sense if all the value is leaving, because we're, we're cutting the corners of every piece of state trust land in order for somebody else to develop, and that development is leapfrogging the trust. So I would be more than happy to continue those conversations between the city and the department to get to the point where you're comfortable with how we operate, we're comfortable with where your aspirations are, and that the trust can be part of those aspirations, I would go to the selection board in a heartbeat to get that done. But I can't go to the selection board for annexation requirements without being able to show the governor and the treasurer and the Attorney General what the plans are, because they have the ultimate say whether or not we proceed. Let's go on to the next slide. So here's, here's an indication where all of, trails are probably one of the most popular things as far as development are concerned. So we, we have had annexations that have intentionally excluded state trust land. And I think that, I think that this is a good example of that. Where we have an isolated piece of state trust land, and I don't think we had sufficient time to try and work something out. Clearly, the city is very interested in the trail. But here we are with essentially land that will be isolated and not taken into the city. I don't make it a practice to stand in the way of people's development. But in fairness, isolating both the, of the pieces of state trust land west of Williamson Valley Road did not make any sense to us, and we didn't seem to be able to move it. But now it will also require a separate, separate conversation probably on the trail as concerned. So we'll build it into the larger portfolio of trail conversations. It's just one example. Any questions about this?
Ma'am, you do understand that that 400-foot strip was to access a piece of land, which was going to be a gorgeous piece of land and an awesome development, which now is going to be in the county because of the supermajority need. And so, you know, it's not as though that piece is, is still in play, as far as I know, is it?
I don't want to speak for the applicant, but my understanding is that he's proceeding with a county development.
Ms. Atkins, in this case, a better proposal would have been to annex everything on the west side of that Williamson Valley Road, is that?
That would, that would have been the preference of the department, so that we didn't have two isolated pieces of trust land, for which we had no idea what was going to happen to them.
Fair.
And that didn't get much traction.
Yep.
Whoops, let me go back one more. So if you look at portions of this map with regard to the purple and the trail and circle trail, I do know that we're going to be having future conversations, because the lease on those trails is coming up. So we'll be in conversations about the renewal of those, of those trail items at some point. But I do think we lost an opportunity for a bigger conversation, given the, given the timeframe. And, and I hope that we can return to that at some point. Let's talk about rights of way. And if I'm going on too long, just stop me. So every right-of-way for the, that is across state trust land is viewed as another transaction that adds value to the trust and for which the trust has to be compensated. There is nothing in the trust portfolio that can be given away. There's a monetary value for everything, including those developments which go through and may put a pipeline and disturb the surface lands. The plants have a value as well, and the trust has to be compensated for, for losing those plants or replanting them. So we have very strict instructions that everything that's in the portfolio has a value, and the beneficiaries are to be compensated for them. This slide, I think, is probably one of the best as far as indicating how the trust has been carved up to facilitate development adjacent to state trust land. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. But these are the kind of things that we'd like to sit down and talk to you about before decisions are made on trails, before decisions are made on roads, before anything is done, so that we don't end up with a situation where the value has inadvertently been stripped, because we don't think about the future. You're realizing the benefit of having those recreation and development opportunities, but the beneficiaries may not be realizing those benefits either, because the revenue stream has been impacted by those decisions. We, there is a phrase that is used when people talk about the State Land Department, and usually it's not in the best of terms. I'll just admit that right up. Best and highest use. Best and highest use is in the eyes of the beholder. We have gone from that, if you walk in and say, "This is the best and highest use for this parcel of state trust land", it's going to, that's the end of the conversation. We, we are responsible for looking and seeing why it's the best and highest use. Maybe your best and highest use, but it isn't necessarily in the best interest of the beneficiaries. So it's an often-used undefinable term, and one which we are trying our best not to use, because we want to use the data of how this in fact is going to benefit the trust, the trust beneficiaries, but also how it strengthens our relationship wherever we have a footprint and vice versa. So you will, if, if you come to the land department, we're obligated to look at every application that's filed, but we're also obligated to make decisions that are in the best interest of the portfolio. And what, how we view the best interest of the portfolio and how you do with that initial conversation may not always match. But our goal is to make sure that there is a continuing conversation where we find some benefit for both parties.
Question.
Yes, sir.
For the interest of the property on, on Pioneer Park and Williamson Valley Road, correct me if I'm wrong, but the annexation, from your standpoint, is not necessarily, it's up for auction. It just gives you an opportunity to be able to sell that in the future for more value? Is that the thought behind the annexation part?
There is no annexation part to the best, oh, you mean what, what could have been?
Yeah, if you wanted to bring in a piece of state land.
Sure.
You know, it doesn't have water on it from the city, but if it comes in and becomes part of the city limits of Prescott, it gives more of an opportunity for the trust to gather more money.
It's not just the trust, but it probably enhances the opportunity for development on those, on those two pieces.
So it's a value to the state all around for that?
All around.
Yeah.
It's your economic development, it's the beneficiary's economic development, and it, it certainly would be to the benefit of working with the department to find the best for everyone involved.
So the, the city couldn't annex it and then give it open space zoning? Because ultimately, if it gave it open space zoning, then nobody would?
No value.
No value?
I don't disagree with you.
Okay.
But the land would have been sold, selling that particular roadway would have enhanced the value of the piece to the north and the piece to the south. The negotiation on the trailhead and all that is, is part of the conversation, but it's not all the conversation.
Sure.
So without having the full conversation, the department has accepted an application to move ahead for the county, to move ahead on that right-of-way, which I think is too bad. I think it's a lost opportunity. But when you have development in a county of, anywhere in the state of Arizona, the land department certainly doesn't want to stand in the way of development. So hopefully, there will be other opportunities in that area, but that's how we were looking at it, that it gave us another step toward enhancing the value of the land on both sides of that right-of-way for potential, for potential sale. Okay, any other questions on rights of way? By the way, if you have a ranch and you have to go through state trust land, you have a, have to have a right-of-way to go through state trust land to get to that ranch, and I've found some of the most interesting roads in this state on state trust land when they come up for renewal every 10 years. It's just fascinating. Trails. One of the lessons that we've learned is that when you have land for a trail, if you isolate the decision to the trail only, you're inviting situations like you see in that trailer. And that is, it's an easy access point for people, it's an easy dumping place. I was greeted my first day in the office with the whisper of, "Has anybody told her about the dead camel?" Because we live next door to a rancher, a landowner, that had a cattle, had a camel on his property, and the camel died, and he dragged it over to state trust land. So it's not unusual for us to find refrigerators, boats, dead animals, trash. And we haven't the resources to be able to keep up with it, to be perfectly honest with you. So we're very careful with where we see breaks into new pieces of trust land, to make sure that we've got some management agreement with somebody to, to help us manage those resources. And it's not just the time and money, it's also the very large potential of destroying natural and cultural resources. Every time we go to sell a piece of property, every time we do something, it has a cultural resource value that's investigated. So no matter what it is, we, we know where those resources are. I have an archaeologist on staff with me constantly.
I have another question.
Yes, sir.
Sorry to ask so many, but.
That's all right.
Let's say, for instance, I happen to be a property owner, let's say a rancher, and I have a section of land, and the section behind me is state land. And I may have a lease on that state land for grazing cattle, let's say, for instance.
Right.
At what point in time does a public, does a public still have allowed access to that over private property?
If you're a hunter, yes. And depending on what kind of grazing lease we have with the, with the lessee, there could be public access to that as well.
Okay, okay.
Okay, trail requests complicating our mission. That's a pretty drury headline. But it actually tells you what kind of a position we're in right now, and I would invite you to look at the map. And all of those purple lines are trails that, that go to the concept of either they're already, they already have a lease for them, they, they are proposed, or they're on somebody's wish list. And trails is probably one of the most active areas that we get requests for all the time. But they're, they go through the same rigorous analysis that we do everything else. What's the impact on the trust? Granted, you're not going to develop mountain tops. I mean, there are places which are very logical to put trails, and there are places where it may be convenient for your constituents, but it's not really in the best interest of, of the long-term interest of the trust. So we are, we are trying to be as open about this conversation as possible. There is a great deal of recreation use on public lands, meaning forest service and BLM, and a lot of times, people don't understand that this type of activity on trust lands requires a permit, but also it's just not de facto open space. Yes? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was just moving.
Thanks. This can be a conundrum for both parties. There's no question that where we don't have development potential, those are ideal places for the trust to be able to recognize a, a use that's valuable to the community. And we are perfectly willing to have that land acquired by the city to be reclassed, so that it's a reasonable expense for the city, because we're not going to develop there. So there's no reason for us to stand in anybody's way, but they cannot, they cannot any longer just be treated as de facto open space. There's got to be some agreement and compensation for the trust. So we're perfectly happy to talk about that at any time as well. I thought Mr. Blair was going to have a question. So we value the fact that we have a footprint in your community and in Yavapai County. I want to continue to work, and maybe we need to be working in a different way to build that relationship between the land department. It's your economic development, it's our opportunity to contribute to that economic development, understanding that we don't have the authority to give anything away. There's a value to everything that's held in the portfolio, and the, and the beneficiaries have to be compensated appropriately. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Atkins, I want to thank you for coming up. You were here a number of weeks ago to meet with Michael and I and a few others, and it was very helpful to hear your mission and kind of with your leadership, a, a different paradigm, if you will, from the State Land Trust, and, and we appreciate that. We want to partner with you. We want to help the state with value of these lands, that, if it makes sense. I want to thank you for working with Joe Baines and others in regard to rights of ways and, and trail issues that we've had. So that's, that's been very helpful. But I do understand your position, and, and I think this council would be willing to work with you to look at some of these lands to, to help you do your job, as long as it makes sense for the City of Prescott. And I appreciate the fact that you want to bring value to the City of Prescott, and appreciate you reaching out. It's, it's very admirable. I think it's helpful for our citizens to hear you speak today.
Good.
Because there's probably a misunderstanding of what State Land Trust is. I'm certain there is. And you're right, many people think of this as de facto open space. They just think it's never going to be developed. And, and yet, there's a real purpose, economic purpose, behind these lands. So thank you for bringing that message. I, I hope that gets out into our community. It'll be helpful, I think, for our citizens to better understand what your purpose is there at the State Land Trust. So thanks for being here today. Let's go to Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Atkins, thank you again for coming up here. I think I agree with the mayor. There's a lot of misunderstanding about state land parcels and policy, et cetera. From my understanding from your presentation, you're trying, you're actually, in a way, almost supportive of development, because development increases the value of state land parcels.
I'm interested in the appropriate management of trust parcels when they are in the path of development, that that is an appropriate use for state trust land.
So also.
We have no, with all due respect, Councilman, we have no mandate for open space.
Correct. I mean, it doesn't add value to your holdings, and it doesn't improve the value for the citizens at large. So examples of the parcel that's west of Williamson Valley, where the original proposal was to strip out a strip of that parcel for its development access, but then leaving two partial components of that parcel with diminished value would be in contradiction of your normal expectation of increasing value. Is that correct?
Correct. Of realizing value.
Right.
It may hold the value that the right-of-way sells for at that time, but it undoubtedly would be diminished from that point forward.
Now, on that southern part of that parcel is a 50-year lease for the county for this stormwater retention bond. And that was just somewhat recently concluded with the county, and the county built that improvement, so to speak. So for that parcel to be annexed and developed, then a lease like that would go along with the deed of that parcel.
Probably.
Yeah. Would you would expect that such a lease to provide more value or less value for your purposes? your purposes?
Like, I'm not an appraiser, so I'm not in a position to be able to answer that today.
Have you had other examples of that?
Of a water treatment facility?
Or a, a long-term 50-year lease on a parcel?
Sure. We annex land that has leases on it at all times.
Would you prefer large, large tracts, like a, a section at a time rather than parts of a section? Obviously, that section has both open space north and south, the Pioneer Parkway, and then the area that's proposed to be developed west of it.
We take every, every instance according to its own situation. There's no set of boxes to check or rules. It's our discretion.
Is it to your benefit to have larger parts or smaller parts?
It all depends on where it is.
So it's all conditional. How about your relationship with Bureau of Land Management and Prescott National Forest? We have so many different properties that surround the city that having the ability to kind of coordinate some of the growth patterns is important. Do you have a good relationship with them?
Yes. We have an excellent relationship with both Forest Service from Region 3 through every forest, and the Bureau of Land Management from Ray Swazo, who's the state director, all the way through his operation.
So do you generally like to consider a, a section at a time?
No, we'll consider more than a section or less than a section.
Or you wouldn't rule out a section as too big?
We don't rule out any application that comes in.
Mm-hmm. Or require more than one section?
No.
Okay. I think that's most of my questions. It's just that, you know, if it take, it took 108 years to reduce 10% of the holdings of the state land trust, then it would probably take about 900 more to kind of get them all on the private tax rolls?
That will be up to another commissioner.
[laughing]
My job, just the next couple of years.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa, for coming up and reinforcing to us the, the state's perspectives as far as state land is concerned. Open space and trails and preservation of our natural beauty is actually an economic driver for not just the Prescott area, but for the whole state. Eco-tourism is a multi-billion dollar economic driver in our state, and people come here to recreate. They come to Prescott to enjoy our natural beauty. We're very proud of our open space policy and our trails and our parks and recreation department.
Councilwoman, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I need to sit down for a second.
Okay.
And I'm going to ask Karen to address this question for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
In fact, our, our community is, we have a very special community, and we want to have sustainable growth, growth that reflects our values and values our town. And as a result, we enacted, the members of the community enacted, an open space tax in 2020, and it raised almost $190 million. And that money was supposed to go to buy land to preserve it. So we're well, well aware that you do not, we don't expect you to give away your state land. We realize it has to be leased or purchased. And as a result, we initially looked into annexing Section 32 because it was in a corridor on 89A and had some potential for being an economic driver as far as commercial development, and also annexing Section 33 into the city and getting it out of the county and increasing the value. And so we would have created an economic corridor with 32 and 33, and it would have been important for our cost-benefit analysis, which is what we have to do in order to make an annexation pretty much pay for itself and not be a burden upon our taxpayers. And unfortunately, the state land department not only wanted us to annex 32, but they, I don't have the map in front of me, but there were also several sections to the north that were kind of checkerboarded up there that were raw land, no roads, and we just, just felt that that wouldn't have been sustainable growth for us. Do you have any comments what the rationale was? Because we were willing to annex several sections, and what happened there?
So the rationale in this map, the circled areas are actually the ones that we did request to be annexed in addition to Section 32. You can see that those, the one, the lower is surrounded by the Deepwell Ranch development. The upper is around the airport, which I know the city has a lot of plans for economic development around the airport, so it just made sense to include those lands. The, the Deepwell Ranch parcel, sections are being subject to requests for right of ways, and those are necessary to facilitate the development that is surrounding the trust. But they also encumber the trust in a way that limits our opportunities for future planning. And it puts a water line that I understand the city passed a policy...
Karen, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just received a message that they cannot hear you on the live view, so if you could speak more into the mic, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the water lines would, the, I realize that we could take advantage of water service through the city if it was approved, but it's at a surcharge, and so that would be another economic impact to the trust. So it just made sense to annex those. And I just want to clarify, annexing and acquisition are two different things. Annexing just means bringing it into the city boundaries. And then at some point, you know, maybe Deepwell Ranch, whomever, would submit an application to us to purchase the land for development. And those are, those are two different things.
And, and also, I need to update you on the latest policy changes up here in Prescott as far as, we now are supplying water outside the city limits without annexation, and the developers are not very motivated to come to us with a reasonable development agreement because they know that they can circumvent the annexation process and the supermajority vote, which would be required in order for them to get annexed and have water. Now, they can stay in the county, and with just a simple majority vote through an IGA now, stay in the county, and the city, through four votes, the city council will supply them with water and sewer. So it's actually detrimental to the state because developers aren't, you know, eager to be annexed anymore because what they're interested in is getting just city-supplied water and sewer. And so that's what's going to happen with the Stringfield Ranch since the annexation didn't go through. He's going to develop, you know, twice as many houses now through an expected...
For clarity's sake, I would tell you this is one council member's opinion, but I don't know that that's true of this whole council, nor is the perception that's being conveyed necessarily true.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'll leave it at that.
You know, just to clarify, so if we had annexed, if those lands had been annexed into the city, then we would have worked with your planning department to put a zoning bank, which is a flexible land use, because we can't presume to know what the proper use is going to be of those pieces at the time that they're ready for development. And so the zoning bank allows us to do flexible land use. So when it's ready and someone comes and applies to purchase the land, there's, we have agreed upon uses between the city and the state land department that would be allowed on that property, but the city is controlling that. So if development is continuing to occur around the state trust land, and, and we get an application to purchase tomorrow, we're going to consider that. And so then it would be zoned within the county and developed within the county. So to me, it, you know, the, the water policy doesn't, it, it's detrimental to us because it would have a 30% surcharge if our developer came to the city for water. Maybe they don't, I don't know. But the annexation just allows the city to influence the type of development that goes in. And so this is happening, you know, you can see in particular the Deepwell Ranch area. You know, that is really intermingled with, with the city. So that's why we requested those annexations.
And then to change the topic, we're all familiar with Glassford Hill. It's a very iconic historic landmark, and with the future growth, it's probably going to be surrounded by development. And there's been a move through Prescott Valley and Prescott and the county to somehow preserve Glassford Hill in its natural state. In fact, I, in my prep for this meeting, I came across the Glassford Hill Preserve Coordination Plan, and it was drafted in April of 2001. And I was just wondering if there was any way that the state could work with us in helping to preserve this, because it would be a wonderful asset to the community and would be, you know, important to our open space and trail development to be a, an economic driver for our community. Is, have you heard of this, or do you have any...
I have not heard of that myself. We're always happy to work with the city if there are planning activities that are including state trust land in, in that area. I will say, though, you mentioned your open space tax, and that might be a good opportunity to purchase the state trust land in the Glassford Hill area to ensure it's preserved. Because we, the trails, the trails are difficult for us. We're not, we don't have enforcement authority. We, you know, we can't go out and, and be a, we don't have park rangers that can go out and police. So managing the trails is, that was my dreary headline. Managing the trails does complicate our mission because we just, we're not an agency that's set up as a public land manager.
I understand, yeah. And we, we do have actually a whole system set up to do, to do all that with, we, we're already doing it with our own parks and recreation department. They're doing a wonderful job, but I would just like to maybe plant a seed, and maybe we could leverage some annexations and maybe incorporate preservation of the sections that the state owns on Glassford Hill.
The best way to do that would be through acquisition.
Yeah.
Representative?
Thank you. Commissioner Atkins, thank you for coming, and appreciate you both being here. I, you know, the message that I'm leaving with, and I think it's, you did a great job of talking about the state land trust, land is not public open space. Because near and dear to my heart, you know, 30 years in public education, is that we, this will help us fund those schools. So K-12 education, I appreciate that trust being there for the future. The other is that your interest is also prosperity for our city and prosperity economic development for our city, and that's all what we're about here as well. So I, I really want to thank you for making those points. It's about economic development, prosperity, and maintaining trust for our K-12 system. So thank you very much for coming.
All right. If there's no other comments from the council, I want to thank you both again for coming up. Really appreciate it. We look forward to working with you guys in the future. This meeting is adjourned. We'll recess for about five minutes, come back for the next meeting.